All right, we'll call this reconvening this meeting. I would like to make a quick comment because this is a reconvening meeting. We're not going to have a public comment tonight. We're not going to be voting on our main agenda item. It's going to be our discussion of construction standards. We don't anticipate any votes tonight. But there will be opportunities for public comment at our regularly scheduled meeting in November as well as any other meetings we might have. The, I've got a couple of changes I'd like to make. First thing-
Mr. Chairman, having said that, just to make sure that we do have some folks here who were really qualified in the-
Sure, sure, let me, I'll compliment you.
Okay, yeah, you can play that.
Yeah, we do have some engineers that are here that we may want to ask some questions of them and we have the right to do that. We would ask, if we do ask, that you keep your answers to, you know, about five minutes or less unless we have additional questions to ask. I'm sure we very well could have another work session on this and we may call additional people that we think are qualified to help educate us and give us additional information. We do have a, we've got a closed session scheduled on the agenda with the other commissioners' approval. I would like to move one of those up to the front. We have someone here that might not need to be here all night and they would like to, and they're an integral part of the comments. We may need to get some information from the closed session. Without objection, I'd like to move that closed session just below the budget revision.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one item. I know we're not taking public comment, but I've been in contact with Mr. Lewis Pendleton, who's the chairman of the planning board, and he requested to address the board as chairman of the planning board, and I think that would be appropriate just to give some history, to give some, to let us know how it came at this point and why. So I would suggest we have him in the agenda and ask Mr. Pendleton to that right before the discussion.
We'll make that first closed session. We'll call it two A after the budget revision. We'll call that two B without objection. We have Mr. Pendleton, and I certainly, I think it's appropriate for Mr. Pendleton, the chairman of the planning board, to, if he would like to speak to us, certainly honor that. Are there any other additions, corrections, or anything else to the agenda?
I mean, Mr. Chairman, I understand that when we get down to the discussion, there's some folks here I'd like to bring up to ask questions, which may cause problems in the data, where experience grading contractors and people like that. Any of those folks out there, we can bring up and ask a question, if they're willing to answer.
If they have expectations of that, I have no objection to that.
Sure, please. We're going to make that clear.
As part of the closed session, I would ask that it be expanded not just to preserve the attorney-client privilege, but also to establish basically a position to take on behalf of the county in connection with a possible purpose.
Okay, can we, can we do that one in the last closed session?
Absolutely.
We'll add that as six A, personal, possible property. Any other changes to our agenda as noted, but already stated changes?
Like what we've shown, we approved, revised the agenda.
So moves our second.
We got a motion to second all in favor with six five, saying aye. All aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we'll start with Ms. Southern, and I'll just say real briefly, I know this, as I told you first, this is definitely the last of the last time we'll ever see you sitting up here because Thursday, yes it is, we're going to have a little celebration.
We are.
Or, as we like to say up here for us, we're at Thursday, but anyway, we'll work it out.
And I will be at work on Thursday.
All right, Ms. Evelyn, if you want to walk us through the budget.
Okay, most of these are just clean up in my department. I don't want somebody else to worry about these things. So number sixty-two is an additional bulletproof vest grant that we've got in the amount of six thousand one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. It needs to be appropriated for that purpose. Number sixty-three is a balance that we have in a clean water trust, ethical revenue, capital project that we had a couple, three years ago. Had to do with the restoration, stream bank restoration fund, because lots of channels out, and there's thirty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine dollars left in that fund that needs to be transferred back into general fund. What is that out? And, and we're just going to let that sit in the general fund capital reserve. It's free money. You can do it as you wish. So we're just going to let it sit there for capital purposes, as you said. Same thing with number sixty-four. If you remember, a few years back, we had the SCC construction and laboratory construction project. There was five million dollars in debt in that project, plus some county money. There's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars left in there. The reason that we left this sitting for so long, you remember, just a couple months ago, you paid the final invoice on that SEC, it was twenty-four thousand dollars. So as far as we know, there's no more to come out of this. Same thing, we're, we're moving this back into general fund, sit in that capital reserve fund to be-
Mr. Chairman, if you remember, this is another reason we're going to miss Evelyn Southern for Kevin and Rodney, who was not here back when this was going on. There was some difficulties with the construction, some other things going on, and y'all remember that well. But we kept asking at the end of the day, we were going to have the money there, and Evelyn Southern said, yeah, that's true. That's been four years. That's pretty close, Kevin. You missed the fifty-eight cents, you got patted up with the-
Fifty-eight dollars.
Fifty-eight dollars, you got patted up, Mr. Pendleton.
I'll take that.
Now, just so I know, that'd be your retirement, we buy you a watch. But chief of law, so that was in fund balance appropriated and you're transferring to general fund or you're transferring to general fund back?
From-
From SCC capital project fund.
Back appropriated.
Back to the general fund.
So get hold of-
From SCC capital project to the general fund reserve.
Excellent.
I guess.
So at that time, you, everybody remember this word, the total amount. So, Fred.
Number sixty-five, this, you've already approved a, an amendment to the capital project ordinance for the river bend water project. If you remember, we got an additional four hundred and eighty-six thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars approved on the North Carolina Dean of Forgiveness line, because, and this is for Swiss Holland, to extend that project now to Swiss Holland. We held off on actually making that budget amendment, hoping that we would know how much that construction amount could be. We, we wanted to approve the amended contract to the contractor and appropriate this money on the side, and that has not happened, and you will know, we're not there yet. So I don't want to leave this hanging with this amount of money appropriated from, from Dean or to us and not have it on there. So the, you've already approved an additional sixty thousand dollars of engineering cost from the deal to engineer the Swiss Holland addition. So the balance of that amount of money is four hundred and twenty-six thousand. So this amendment will put that in contingency in that capital project fund, then as you approve the contract, you move it out of contingency into year.
Now, Sunset, I'm this money from Dean, right?
No, then I'm where?
And you're, this is, this is the fund balance?
No, this is within the capital project.
Okay, got you.
Okay.
Do we need somebody, Evelyn said, somebody in the department needs to be aware to keep a watch on this, you know, decide if they see we've not done nothing with the money, they do something with it right quick? They've been known to look back at you.
You're going to take care of that with a stick and a knife?
Yeah. Number sixty-seven, same kind of situation. If you remember, on the Little Tennessee sewer project, we were able to get an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollar rural center grant to go toward that project. We approved the capital project ordinance to include this, but we did not put it on the books because we're not exactly sure where it's going to go. So this is to appropriate that money, put it into contingency within that construction project, and then it can be moved out of there as you use it for construction, engineering or whatever.
Okay, and Evelyn, on number sixty-six, you had two stuck together, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's right.
On transfer of-
Safety funds.
The, the nine level code safety.
I'm trying to hide this from state. If you remember, a couple months back, we had a budget amendment, four hundred and one thousand dollars, which is, is fund balance in our E-911 that had been, was accumulated as of June thirty, two thousand and ten. That money can be used for public safety, which you approved that, so capital equipment for their building to do some, some new 911 equipment, et cetera, down there, but cannot be paid for out of E-911 funds, but it can be used for public safety, and the renovations that are going to happen now. So I brought you a budget amendment for four hundred and one thousand. I overstated that by two hundred and three thousand. Reason for that was that actually the only amount that we had approved that we could use for this public safety was the amount that had been accumulated as of June thirty, two thousand and ten. I included it for two thousand and eleven, and, and now I'm at X that they might, that might not be approved by 911 board. So I want to reduce that four hundred and one thousand by this one oh three to keep us safe. And then if the 911 board approves that, you will have another person to put that back. Okay? Okay, that's all.
Do we need a motion to approve, please?
Yeah.
Okay, we got a motion to second all in favor with six five, saying aye.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a budget amendment prepared when you get to the county members on the hour of school. If you approve that, here's the budget amendment.
Terrence, I think you called, you called me or you may have called somebody else.
This will work out, this will work out. Okay, thank you, Evelyn. We'll move on to, we got, this is going to be, I think, a very, very short closed session. When I say very short, Mr. Attorney, I'm assuming we won't be there fifteen minutes or so, do you think?
The purpose of this one is to, in connection with to preserve attorney-client privilege.
Right, right. So that, this shouldn't be a long closed session. Yeah, I'm assuming fifteen minutes, so if you'd like to take a break or whatever, if we have a motion to go into closed session.
That's pursuant to provisions of General Statute one forty-three, that's three one eight point eleven, and-
Three, three, very good. Preserve-
That's exactly what he moved, I'll say.
All right, so we got a motion to second all in favor-
Aye.
Somebody, we'll be back shortly. Yeah, be, yeah, be your best. Derek, say everybody else take your own.
I feel like you should have, didn't get to show out the reasons.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I probably did that have hesitation.
To what? What are you sure? Yeah, yes. That must be killing you.
So, so you mean, you mean- So, we do have a- Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd like to make a motion and recognize, I'd like to make a motion concerning the bond proposal, and the county attorney will explain that, and I will finish the motion at that time. So at this time, before he even has sex with the chairman, I'd like to make my last comment.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. A gentleman I was contacted by Derek Rowland of the county offices concerning a bond that was provided to the county under the Macon County subdivision ordinance. It was done by Diamond Falls Estates LLC, and gentlemen, as it turned down, the county looked closer after the bonds were given and determined that it needed a larger bond, and so it went back to Diamond Falls and said, we need a larger bond, and Diamond Falls basically said, fine, we'll get you one. And so what I have done, folks, is I have prepared a proposed agreement between the county and Diamond Falls whereby Diamond Falls would provide that particular bond, and furthermore, specifically agreed to complete the improvements in that subdivision in accordance with the list of matters that had been given to the county that were to be completed. Furthermore, the bond itself would require those matters to be completed by the per bond. And I think you've each had an opportunity to look at that agreement as well as the proposed bond, and if the, if there are any questions, and if the board is inclined to approve that agreement, we would need a motion to authorize Ryan Flynn, the chairman, to approve the agreement, increasing the amount of bond, and furthermore, specifically align the matters that were-
So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion, we authorize the county attorney along with the planning department to execute the agreement as described concerning the Diamond Falls bond, with the increasing of the bond, and the dispensing of the original bond.
Now, as far as the dispensing of the original bond is concerned, I would say to this board that what you would need to do is authorize, you would need to authorize the dispensing of that bond upon Derek receiving certification that at least that sum of work, the original amount of work, had to be completed.
And that's a minimum.
Do we have a motion to second? Any further discussion? All in favor, put six five, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Let the record show to you now. So, thank you, gentlemen. Next, and I apologize, that session took a little long, but next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Lewis Pendleton. He has some comments to go on with construction standards before we, you know, general.
Oh, the proposed construction standards, before you were taken directly from the recognition of Safe Slope Development Group, developed on Safe Slope Development Work Group. I know you've heard me say this before, but the work group is made up of grading contractors, builders, developers, planners, geologists, hydrologists, drillers, and planning board members. They spent two years studying slope development issues, taking testimony from a variety of professionals, individuals, and construction engineers. Among those providing expertise were the three private second engineers who have invited to attend tonight. I'd like to offer to use their assistance should any technical issues arise in the discussion of these standards, and I'd like to introduce them right now. The first one I'd like to introduce is Dr. Dan Marks. He's a licensed engineer in North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Tennessee, and Oklahoma. He has a PhD in civil engineering, has been practicing geotechnical engineering for over forty years. This man has done everything from building some of the highest earth and dams to building runways, providing vehicles, peak standards for road construction. Very impressive. Second individual I'd like to introduce is Dan. Raise your hand, please. This is Dr. Dan Marks. The second one I'd like to introduce is Dr. Ian Hay. He's been practicing civil engineering for over forty-five years. He holds a PhD in engineering from Jordan Institute of Technology. He's a former developer. He has extensive knowledge in construction standards, understands the business side of land development. Semi-retired, he was a licensed engineer in seven straits, including North Carolina and currently holds the license in the state of Georgia. Ian, you want to raise your hand? There he is. The third individual I'd like to introduce is Mr. Ron Dillback. He has a bachelor of science degree, environmental geology from Western Carolina University. Nine years of geotechnical experience, starting with Schonfeld Engineering in two thousand and two. Ten years of environmental experience, including out in southeast. He's owner of Creekstone Environmental and formerly Geo, and geotechnical services, formerly Creek Solutions Environmental. He's a licensed professional geologist in the state of North Carolina and Georgia. He has forty hours of OSHA training. He specializes in wetland stream delineation, irrigation restoration, underground stores, bank removal, groundwater soil remediation, geotechnical services, which includes soils, subsurface investigations, soil compaction tests, soil stability analysis, and landslide characterization stabilization, and stormwater services. And that's him right there, another good one. These guys are used to charging the big bucks. I mean, listen to the resume, and they're used to the big stuff. But you know what? They gave us the first time, and here tonight, and here again, so they need to take advantage of this, because it's in your hands, and it'd be a big one for all of you. Um, you know, I'd like to add one thing. I'm a developer, local construction engineer, earth engineer, anything else, and most of our projects are empty, and we include ours. I don't have the technical expertise that gentlemen do, but I have the practical experience in the ground out there, and I know what I've seen out there, and when you listen to them, they substantiate what I've seen, so it kind of, I have to agree with what I've seen. The county has a responsibility to protect property owners from substandard development. Already, the bad, bad developments costing contractors, costing banks, costing realtors, costing county jobs, costing people who might otherwise invest in that, the county don't feel like their investment in land is pure, but they don't feel like they have all the best available information in their mind for this issue. Although this document alone will solve all these issues, we believe it comes a long way in addressing many of the problems we see, some people who will take shortcuts might be asking, we can water it down. But take it from me, a dirt-wheeler and developer, and from engineering experts, the requirements of this proposed document are minimal, and we ask that the proposed proposal carefully can be passed. As a county, when our people here can invest their money, build their homes, and live out their lives, in turn, it is our duty as a county to protect our lives. We can do that by enacting and enforcing basic public safety laws, like the ones that you have performance tonight, that will be distracted by the rhetoric that's dominated the conversation up to this point. This isn't about ideology. It's not about winning some political game. This is about real people, people who respect and deserve, who know Kelly can do right now. We have an opportunity to do that tonight, but don't let that opportunity pass. Kelly, on that.
Thank you very much. Okay, gentlemen, you have, I think it's in a perfect folder, having my received it. Basically, what we have is, is the final recommendations, of which there are eight. And then we also have definite, final recommendations for definitions. Oh, seven, excuse me, I said eight. Thank you. Let me, if I might, just briefly, just read these, if I might, and then we can start from the beginning and work our way down. These are the final recommendations for construction standards that approved for planning board, all safe things in this year. Number one, the area to be excavated for a home which field, a big place, should be stripped and scrubbed, and all of its computers should be removed from that area. Two, the cut slopes between eight and thirty feet vertical height, the maximum allowable slope is one vertical to one and a half horizontal, one and a half vertical. For field slopes between five and thirty feet vertical height, the maximum allowable slope is one vertical to two horizontal. The land disturbing activity should not contain ungraded or structurally stabilized slope in excess of thirty feet vertical height in cut area and thirty feet vertical height in field area. Structural field material must be placed in lifts not greater than eight inches thickness and compact until a minimum of ninety-two percent standard proctor density. The compaction will be verified at the discretion of the administrator. Number six, a minimum ten foot wide bench shall be constructed into a natural slope in the field. One additional five foot wide bench shall be cut into natural slope every ten feet increase in vertical height. Number seven, these general requirements may be modified by a design professional and related field provided in difficult technical justification and submitted to the administrator. And I'm assuming the administrator is, is our, my-
Right.
Okay, those are the seven, and I won't read the definitions of the terms used up here, but that is a viable, a viable, I won't take the time to do that, so it kind of says. So, gentlemen, having said that, I will open the floor for a general or specific discussion of any of these standards. We did have a particular area, because we wanted to know which is the best.
Chairman, can I start with number seven?
Let's just go number one here, we'll start number one.
Well, I can do anything. Okay. Does that mean, I think I understand what it means, but I'd like for you to say, that means if you have a design professional and you come up with a plan that, that doesn't meet those expectations, that you can still have that approved? Does that work for you?
Yes.
And that applies back to all of them?
And I will read this because it's very clear, which says, people can understand from the fact that whatever, a design professional, as, as, in the current definition that this reads, is a civil engineer, geotechnical engineer, land surveyor, architect, landscape architect, professional geologist currently registered in the state of North Carolina. That's what does-
That's what we want to talk about first, that's why I have more to talk about. No, none of my job, have they ever been a, any of these, and they can speak to it. An architect, engineer, like the county attorney, to do proctor on the soils, to do a compaction test, to my knowledge, a landscape engineer cannot do that, and I don't have a license. Not to my knowledge. Can you make sense of that? And so you're going to have to limit this to real engineers. Well, a land surveyor certainly can't do that. Architect, landscape engineer can't, I'm talking about in my business. A professional geologist can't do that. It takes, you have to be licensed in North Carolina, be a licensed civil engineer to perform proctors on soil and compactions on soil. That's all ones I know that can do it. If I'm right or wrong, please correct me.
You see, it's-
Yeah, if you want to come, I mean, I'm just asking, I'm sitting, in my, in my, I'm a building contractor, I used to be a building contractor, four or five years ago.
The working group discussed exactly what you're concerned about, and rather than try to split up tasks that a certain registered professional can do, and another one can do, and what certain people can't do, and you properly said it, I think, landscape architects, for example, shouldn't be doing compaction tests. We, we put down all of the registered professionals that are likely to be involved in a land development project of any kind, whether preparation of a house site, a building of a road, a dam, a lake, whatever kind of land disturbing activity that can be. What stands above that is the state regulations for professional registration, which essentially say that professionals can't practice outside of their area of expertise. So that, right there, takes out a landscape architect, trying to do compaction tests. I guess what I'm trying to say is, you don't actually have to say that. You can leave those as, those people as defined, design professionals, for, for example, preparing a pipeline, but they're already precluded from doing such things, as the technical issues, certain ones are.
I can see that can get a bit confusing, to, to a person come in, pull a building from it, and they have to build a hundred foot, hundred fifty foot driveway to their house, and a hoop they're going to have to jump through to get to this point, and if, after, you know, there's nothing in, in our ordinances now and the future to be able to have to hire a landscape architect. But if you start building a road, and this is specific construction standard, and mostly contains roads, that I believe is what, what all these are, right, that's why it's patented, so I just wanted to make sure that I was, that I was reading something right, because I have to deal with engineers quite often, and almost everything we do now, so, and there's specific engineers that do specific things. If it comes to soil, there's no doubt about what they have to do.
Please note that these construction standards don't require the hiring of a design professional, engineer, or otherwise, unless you want to change them. If you want to change them, go beyond them, then you need to do it with the advice of a- Then you need to do it with the advice of a proper design professional.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. What equipment you're going to have to test, please?
Ronnie Gilbeck, I think, does that, and he can probably tell.
To me, just for compaction tests, and it, they're basically, all the soils around here vary. You've got to start off as a proctor, or a modified proctor, right? Which is basically, this is the metal cylinder, and you compact the soil in there to a certain degree that you cook off, so you know what, what amount of moisture this soil requires to make compaction. And then, basically, you just cook off, once you, once you have that proctor stand, or modified proctor, then you get back to the field, and you cook the test off, uh, the soil off, and you find the wood content, and there's a regional curve, or what you would create if you proctor it.
And how much does it cost to be...
Uh, it varies, I mean, once you have everything, and then you're probably in, yeah, twenty-five hundred dollars.
Did you call Haywood County, and that's the only county I know of giving, giving business, third to soil business. Haywood County's full fed, and a full fed engineer. Anybody check, see what their expenses are?
We got a list of expenses, um, for some equipment needed. We had priced, and Matt can probably speak a little bit more to it than I, but we had priced a nuclear density gauge to do this testing at about six thousand five hundred fifty dollars. For that, for that piece of equipment.
He's authorized to run.
You have to be trained to run it. And, uh... I'm, I'm pretty sure, you have to be, you have to be certified. You've got to be certified to run it, because that would be...
Yeah, the problem, the problem is with that is, you know, what we've got to think about is where does the county liability come in? So, we want the liability of having a compaction test. That's what this board is going to have to decide.
Well, the liability would be on the person taking the test.
No, we just said, though, we, Haywood County, Haywood, Haywood County's assuming our responsibilities for that compaction, that's what they're in. We buy the equipment. The mechanics will be assuming that directly, somebody will...
Well, you're doing the same thing as...
How much is all this going to cost?
I mean, you're assuming liability from the equipment, so it's...
It has to stay standing. We've got to run it for standing, how much is all it?
How much is all the equipment, do these compaction tests, going to cost the county?
About ten thousand dollars.
Now, we don't have to have certified people running this, right? And how much, we're going to be looking at paying somebody? Excuse me, what is the cost of an annual salary, or how are we going to pay? At an average, what is going to cost to pay somebody certified to run this?
Get the existing fully certified.
He's certified.
He will be. Maybe. I'm not certified.
But if you got certified, the cost of paying whatever your salary is, about, about how many hours you work?
Yeah.
All right, now, if these standards are right, I'm going to ask you gentlemen this right here. What some other people are telling me, if you compact this soil, they're going to have to see somebody standing there watching every dirt load, dump truck load of dirt, going, it's not something, go back and check it up two or three days or every week. Am I right?
You checking in lifts as it comes up?
All right, how deep can you check with that test that you're talking?
Well, the, the nuclear density, he was mentioning is different than what I was describing to you. The way, what I was describing to you is more of a, an old method, I mean, there's an AST standard for it, but it's an, an older, more...
It's like a shore sample, what you're talking about?
Well, kind of, yeah. Well, you characterize the soil, and you match it with the amount of moisture it needs to be there to reset the value. I mean, you can go all the way to twelve inches, but, you know, something more like eight inches, you know, six to eight is more likely, depending on what's going to be sitting on it.
If it's thirty feet deep dirt being put in, compacting over the last couple of days, you can only go eight inches, can't you?
Well, we need to test that as it's coming up, a minute.
So, we need to have somebody...
If you've got thirty feet of soil that... If it wasn't documented as it was coming up, then you don't know it's there, then you've got to get into, you know, drill rigs, you've got to go down the drill rig.
So, you do have, so you do have to have somebody on site for every load that comes in to be tested?
Yeah, but they don't necessarily have to be there constantly all day, but, yeah, depending on, you know, if it's...
Well, I mean, I mean, if you bring in a load every hour, they're going to run back to the office, and run back, go get the load all day long, basically, they're going to be there.
I mean, if you fill as fast as his father does, depending on contract, then you might want to just stick around site and have one.
Well, I don't know whoever doing the building, then, if they fill that fast, it was time to run that just...
Do you have any...
This is not, I have a question, just so I can understand.
He's got, no, Ronnie's got to do some there.
Yes, sir.
I'm probably the one that has the most experience in the questions that have been posed here. Um, what you're talking about is construction services. Um, and I, I'd like to start off with, with an old saying. Um, you've heard the old saying, it's better to have something than nothing. Well, that's not true in geotechnical engineering. This, this standard right here is about as close to nothing as you can get. If you water it down any further, you're not going to have anything that's worth adding. And I've heard the word liability mentioned once. Um, and I'm not going to go into that with you, but I, I want y'all to think about it tonight when you go home. Uh, you have, you have before you a, a construction standard that is just about as low on the home pole as you can go. And I, I'll go down and, and show you why, if you give me just a few minutes. Number one, starts off very good. The area will be, um, from which, uh, fill will be placed will be cleared, scrubbed, and stripped of all organic material and removed from the area. How far from the area? Are you going to let them put it back in there? The, the construction standard initially had some discussion of suitable materials. It was taken out, and I think that was a bad, bad mistake. You need some provision for what is suitable material. You're going to allow debris in it, you're going to allow rotten leaves in it, you're going to allow large rocks in it, you're going to allow some undesirable soils that are found here in the mountains. You need to think about that. Number two, uh, I had recommended early on that you look at, uh, cut slopes and fill slopes, uh, between five and twenty feet. And the reason for that is that unless you truly test a, a fill slope, uh, when you get over about twenty feet, you need to have some kind of, uh, analysis done. Up to about twenty feet, you're pretty safe at a two to one. You get over about twenty feet, and things begin to get kind of critical. And that's dependent on how much rain you've had, and what happened to the slope, and how well it's compacted. Uh, number four, uh, I think is a, is a good thing. Uh, I've done a lot of, uh, MSA walls, mechanically stabilized earth, MSE walls. Uh, thirty feet's about as high as you want one. Uh, number five, ninety-two percent, let me tell you what ninety-two percent is. Ninety-two percent, well, let me start at eighty-five. Eighty-five percent is taking a dump truck out there and dumping a, a load of good dirt, good, I mean, good dirt, sandy silt. Dumping it, spreading it out with a small tractor, say a D four, something like that, or a rubber tire compactor with a front loader on it, smoothing it out, and rolling over it a couple of times. That'd get you about eighty-five percent. Nothing. It's going to settle, anything you put on it's going to settle. If you wait long enough, it's going to slide down the mountain. Ninety-two percent is you roll it a little bit more with that small tractor, and the next dump truck that you, you come in, comes in loaded, you have him roll it a couple of times. That'd be about ninety-two percent. Uh, ninety-five percent compaction requires some, some effort. I mean, above just having construction traffic run over. Uh, the soils in the mountains of North Carolina are extremely sensitive to compaction. I can show you shear strength data from soils compared to the same soil, compacted at ninety percent, ninety-two percent, ninety-four percent, ninety-six percent, on up to a hundred percent of standard proctor. And the angle of internal friction that you get will range anywhere from twenty, twenty degrees at ninety percent compaction, up to as much as thirty-five percent at ninety-five percent. Now, that's a lot of difference. That means a factor of safety of nothing or one, that's bigger, up to one and a half, which is a desirable factor of safety for slope. So, I would, I would suggest to you that you look at that ninety-two percent compaction. And, uh...
I bet, what are you doing, Colonel?
Yes, sir.
If I might? Just so that I understand, it says ninety-two percent of, of standard proctor density, and I assumed from what you were saying earlier, well, I shouldn't assume. What is then standard proctor density? Is that as you find it, is that, what is, does that matter?
Can I interject one word there?
Yes.
You should say dry density.
Sir.
Dry density is a, that, the word dry should be in there.
Yes, standard proctor, uh, ninety-two percent of the standard proctor dry dens, maximum dry density.
Should be dry density.
Maximum dry density, and, uh, to be a good spec, it ought to say add compaction moisture contents between some percentage dry, optimum, and wet of optimum. Because this spec right here, if I can get ninety-two percent, I can put it in there as wet as I want to.
Well, Luke, do you agree?
Or as dry as I want to.
When you, when you back that dump truck up there, you were talking about that loose field, it falls out of the truck. Usually falls at about a one to one, correct? You agree with that, more or less? When you dump a truck, load a dirt over a bank, it falls at about a one to one, right?
Right. You're going to talk about angle of the pose?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's nothing to do with shear strength and soil.
No, no, but, no, no, but it falls at about a one to one.
Yes.
And people think you can take a dozer and pack dirt. A dozer does not pack dirt.
No.
You take a loaded dump truck now with fifteen ton on it, it'll pack dirt.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so that's some of the things that as a board, I just have a little more about, because I, what I probably used to, and, uh, so I know, just a little bit of that, and I've paid a lot of money to have that done.
Right. Um, then, uh, so, I would suggest to you that you think about the compaction standard and putting a controlled moisture content in there. And, um, I, I think you'd be better off to have some frequency of test. Uh, one that is used in the industry quite often is one test for twenty-five hundred square feet. That's, that's not, that's not a whole lot of testing. You think you're going to put in a, a sliver fill and say it's fifty feet wide, and you've got to take a test every twenty, thirty, fifty feet. So, um, that, that takes... Well, I'm, I'm just going to say, that, that takes liability off the agreement, sir. Why, why saddle him with that, that liability? If, if he has a slope that fails, and somebody says, well, if you'd have run two more tests, we probably wouldn't have had this failure. Then he's going to say, well, it was my opinion, then we didn't need two more tests. Why, why put that liability on him? Put it in the ordinance and say, you need to run one test per lift for every twenty-five hundred square feet of fill that you put in. Then, you call the geotechnical firm to come run your test. You know that the fill's twenty-five feet high, going in in eight inch lifts. You know how big it is. You tell the guy on the telephone, I need for you to run fifty density tests while we're putting this fill, then he'll give you a price.
I, I, I do agree with, uh, I have this comment, yeah, that the compactions are not need to be verified at the discretion of the administrator. And, and either these are not be done at all, or be done in a regular way.
You're, you're putting that on the ones...
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Well, plus, you're, you're, uh, opening yourself up to, I mean, you can't tell this guy, you need to have fifty density tests, and I'm putting you in the danger of you putting any of them over there in my discretion, and I've, I've got a headache now, I don't feel like getting all of them.
Or I don't like this particular part of the regulation. Take that part out of it.
Well, or, or perhaps y'all could send him to Robbie for something.
Right.
And it's, it's my day to put a fill in.
But while you're speaking, explain, explain to all of us in language terms about eight inch lifts, and what that really means, I mean, most people thinks that, that you're going to have Ronnie out there at eighty, every eight inches, he's going to be there doing a test, every eight inches in an eight by eight box. That's not what that means at all.
No.
So, if you could put that in language terms, I think that would be verified.
Eight inch, and it should say eight inch, I hope they didn't make this word out. Let's say eight inch compacted lift.
I know, it just says, it says structural fill material must be placed in lifts not greater than eight inches in thickness.
Eight inch, uh, what it should, what it should specify, I think, is eight inch compacted lift. Uh, eight inches compacted lift. So, when you spread it out of that dump truck, then, once you're out there in the soil a little bit, you're going to figure out how much I need to put down to get an eight inch compacted lift. Some soils will be eight inches, some soils are going to be nine inches, because they're, they're very quick to compact, they're dense. Some soils, you might be able to put a foot back, it's not very good material. So, the thicker you put it down, and it's compacted to eight inches, the sorrier the soil is. If you put good soil down, you put nine inches down, you're going to get eight. So, the better and the better material that you put down. And then you get the base stone. If you want eight inches, you put down eight, right? You know you're not going to densify that very well. So, the better the soil, I can walk on the site and tell you, well, you've got good soil, though. I've seen something like that. I watched that dump truck run across it. If it's eleven inches deep, and it compacts it down to eight, you got, you got mess on your hands.
So, basically, just what that inch is, so I can understand, it doesn't matter whether it's twenty-four inches or nine inches. A lift is, I find compaction not more than eight inches.
That's, that's what most specifications, that's what most specifications dictate. And that way, that way, when, if you're using a nuclear gauge, or if you're using a sand cone, the old fashioned method, where you take a big spoon and dig down through the lift, you can dig eight inches through that lift and test the whole lift depth. The, the nuclear gauge, you drive a rod in the ground, and pull that rod out, set the machine on it, and extend the, the probe that's got the nuclear re, uh, bulb in it, which, by the way, won't make you stare. Uh, and, and put it down in the ground. Well, I can prove that, actually. Uh, anyway, uh, you can put it down in the ground, eight inches, so you test the whole thickness. When I was going to Oklahoma State, I had a research project, first research project ever used nuclear investigators. And I slept with that thing for about five years. And my son's from Florida, just come by to see me.
I got three dollars, I got three dollars and slept by a nuclear reactor for twenty-five years, so I'm not worried about it.
Anyway, uh, what, what I want to tell you is that if, if, if you're going to pass this thing... if you're gonna pass this thing, please don't take it down another notch. And I, I think you need to go back up a notch. You sorta got the cart before the horse. And I would have rather seen you pass the, the slope ordinance first, so that you had an ordinance on the books, and you could address the construction standards to the ordinance. But I understand, I, I understand things a lot, and I've been around a long time, and I understand why you didn't pass the ordinance first. But don't, don't take this down anymore. You're, you're at a minimum.
I got another question, I might.
Yeah, I just have an example of it about taking it down, I wouldn't yield.
Yeah, well, uh, number three says, "Fill slope twenty-five, thirty feet vertical height, you got this a lawful slope vertical horizontal." Now I'm looking down at number six, I'm just trying to make sure I'm standing. Assume I have a five-foot slope, the, the minimum, the five-foot slope. Number six says, "A minimum ten-foot wide bench still being constructed to the natural slope at the top of the field." So if I have only a five-foot slope, I gotta do a ten-foot wide bench there, so.
Your dozer plates, you must have a ten-foot wide.
But I mean, that is what that says, right?
Because the thing is, if it's less than five feet, you could build it at a one and a half to one.
That's right. Well, let me, and picking up on, let me give you an example, but just a note I put down about, if you're putting in a ten-foot road, you've got two-foot shoulders on the road. Uh, that's fourteen foot wide. Let's say the slope's fifty percent, you're working on. On, on a, if you do it, under these standards, the height of the excavation of that road, by my calculation, which I don't guarantee, would be about thirty-nine foot tall.
That's about right.
That's about right. So, but if you were to change the cutting parameter to a one-to-one on some of these mountain soils, uh, the height'd be nineteen foot wide, by my calculations. If you, if you could go, if the soils, different soils, you can do different things, you agree to that?
Right.
So different soils, you can do different things. So you could go to a one-to-one and cut that, you know, what we, you know, everybody's really concerned about the barrel look of the mountains and what it looks like.
Right.
So a thirty-nine foot cut and a nineteen foot cut is a whole lot of difference, uh, in what aesthetically it looks like. Now, now we get down to what the soils look like. But we also gotta address in here is in, where we live in Mayfair County is rock. There's not a rock clause in here.
Right.
Changes everything.
That's right.
It changes the slope. You can put rock on a backward slope. It don't have to be a north slope. You can put it, you can put it going backward. We've done that. And it passes. But that's a different thing. Then you gotta talk about loose soils on top of rock. Another thing we've not talked about, but, so, I, I'm not saying water me down, but I'm saying as, as a professional, would you consider, I mean, should this board consider having some provision? You gotta have a lot of provision just because of the different soils in this county. Somebody said one time, "How many soils we have?" You might remember, it was remarkable. How many different soils we have in the county?
Yeah.
So on some roads, I'm just using that for an example, if you, if you're on a big state slope, and you've got good compacted clay that you can work with, would you agree that you could cut that to a one-to-one and save cutting that thing forty feet and cut it down in half, if you had the correct soil?
Not a one-to-one. With the soil, not a one-to-one.
You would never, under any circumstances, go to a one-to-one?
Yes.
Even no matter what kind of soils it is?
It, it won't be stated. Because the P-angle, you were talking about the angle of repose.
Right.
There's no soil, we're talking soil, that I know of, that consistently has a angle of internal friction in excess of forty-five degrees, which we would have to have to get a slope of one-to-one to even be a factor of safety of one against progressive surface failure. So, you couldn't build a one-to-one.
I'm just talking about having to have that forty-foot, that forty-foot, you know, scab cut. If you can dig down twenty feet, still have a safe road.
I understand, I understand. But the thing is, before you get to that, before you get to that depth, you're gonna run into sacrilege, which is the transition between residual soil and rock, partially buried rock. Then you're gonna get into-
Sometimes we just go to straight rock.
Riding up, then you go into some highly-gated rock and then rock. So at some point there, you're gonna be able to cut that rock vertically. And then, as you go up into the different soils, you're gonna have to start laying it back. So, really, in the mountains, the best design, I think, was a broken back slope, where, where you cut as much of it as you can vertically. And then you drop it back to one and a half to one, to take care of your sacrilege. And then you drop it back to a two-to-one to get out of the residual. And that takes less of that thirty-nine feet that you calculated.
Right.
So you're scrunching it into about twenty, you're scrunching it into about half. Because you could cut a considerable amount of the front.
And when we run into, to be frank, you just as much problem with sloughing. You got sloughing on one side because of compaction, but then you got the upper side of the road, which is basically, it's, it's not only sloughing, you can get, at least on where it's sloughing, you can get some type of vegetation.
Right.
On these shircut banks, you can't get none.
That's right.
Cuts you when you're going.
That's right.
So that's the, you know, but if you could, I think we need to, you know, people like you can tell us if, if a one-to-one can do it and cut, and cut from having to cut all these mountains down twenty foot on a ten-foot road, that's huge, that's a big thing, in my mind. And I think a lot of folks' mind, a lot of people on this board's mind, you know, to save that. And then, then how's it gonna be maintained? You know, the steep of that slope, the amount that you got, one thing we've not addressed in here, we, we gotta be talking about in terms of, I'm not saying, well, you gotta address coverage in the road. That's gotta be, I mean, without the coverage in the road, you can have a better road standard in the world. Rock, water's not gonna have a middle of it, it don't matter.
That's right.
So that's another thing to add to the list. It's cover, I mean, I'm, I'm not talking about, you know, we've talked about stormwater runoff, and I've been part of this plan, we, we've never met, but I've been down this road one time.
Right.
So the coverage in a road, you know, if it's said, you know, at certain points, most graders, we, we're blessed with a lot of good construction, we really are, and they've taken that here.
Franklin's got, got more than they're sure.
But then you have a developer, you know, a, a, a now, a twelve-inch cover, twenty-foot, twelve-inch cover, they're not giving them a weight, so. Uh, but then who's gonna keep the covers clean? So everything leads to something.
It's hard to say. If, if you're using twelve-inch cover, you're making the first mistake.
It should be twenty.
It should be at least twenty-four, in my opinion.
That's a little bit too high, going way.
I know, but if I shoot high, then, you know, the target gets far away.
Most engineers do, they ain't come down the park.
But you agree it has to be bigger than that. We got a lot of leaves in western North Carolina. So, and a lot of cones.
I have one question you mentioned, just on the left side, I'm just trying to understand. You mentioned about a vertical cut.
Yes, sir.
Why would you ever do, I, I thought the stick or the cut the worse it is, so why would you go to a vertical cut? I must be misunderstanding.
He spit the snow off.
Oh, you mean that hook you gonna lay it back?
Yeah, then you lay it back, you get rock.
In the, in, in the rock, after, after you excavate down to the rock. Say you got a side hill.
Right.
And then you're gonna cut notch in it, make a road.
Right.
After you go down so far, you're gonna hit rock.
Right.
Then you can pre-shoot that, pre-split that rock in almost vertical, say one and a quarter, one, one point, one five to one. Be almost vertical. Then when you get up higher, you lay that slope back and then lay it back down. So you get as much, you get as much bang for your buck by going vertical, on your vertical, as you can.
And that ten-foot bench, that's basically a blade width, right, bud? And, and really, when you come up with that blade width on your lifts,
You turn it back.
That ties back in, and on the ten-foot bench, which is very important, that keeps that, as you come up. I got it.
I think one point that needs to be made is you can do those things that Dan's talking about doing, but you better have some geotechnical investigation done before you start doing those things.
Yep.
And that's how this is written. If you can't meet those standards, then you have to get an engineer.
In other words, number seven, number seven, once you read through the whole thing, and you say, "I can't do that. I, I've got a three-to-one slot out here, okay, that's a thirty-three and a third percent slope." Well, we didn't, we didn't get the slope ordinance, so you can do something with it, again, you got enough money. So you go through these, or, you go through these construction things. And if you see that it's just not gonna work, "I can't get a two-to-one to work in there, I can't get one and a half to work. It's, it's gonna take more than I thought, it's bigger than my lot." Then you go to number seven, and, and you get somebody like Rocky, or somebody. Notice I didn't say myself. Anyway, get them to come over here, do some boards for you, and say, "All right, here's what I think y'all do. Y'all cut this thing, make sure your house is on, all cut. And if you want a front yard, we'll put some fill out there. But I'm not gonna do it at ninety-two, because then it's gonna be down in your backyard. And I have mis-served my client, the diamond bar. It ain't gonna be at ninety-two, I can tell you that." So, um, the, the thing that Al was bringing up is, you get to the bottom of the page, number seven always controls.
That, that wise that question for, to me, that's-
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Right, right. But just make sure you got the, as Ed said, make sure you got the right professional doing the right thing.
So what you're saying, if this is designed right, that you could build a road with no slope, right?
Sir.
With a designed professional to come in, maybe to fill it. Uh, we were talking about one-to-one, one had, one-to-two had, but I mean, it might be that you bring back this solid rock or something on the side of it, you don't have to have them slopes.
Right.
With the same.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could, when you cut that, when you cut that bench behind your house, say, and you're gonna put your road in front of it, and you cut that, and you cut this slope, you're gonna have to lay the top part back because it's soil. But when you reach a certain point, depending on the quality of the rock, and, and the joining and all that stuff, that some of these geologists can do better with that, you can cut that stuff maybe one and a quarter to one, or one point, one five, or even work it one-to-one. And, and that way, you're taking, you're getting the biggest bang for your buck, because you go up vertical before you ever start sloping back. So it's, it's not as bad a thing as it sounds like. But you have to have people to evaluate that. If you just turn somebody loose, and they say, "Well, we're gonna cut the back of this slope vertical." You don't know that. Mother nature does plenty of things. You'll be running through good rock, you'll come to that first little drainage thing, holler, coming out of the mountain, and then we'll be in the bottom of it. You got nothing. You got no rock, you got sorrier soil. What are you gonna do then?
Look, only number seven, can I ask you a general question?
Yes, sir.
These general parameters may be modified by a design professional in the related field provided, except for Captain Justice Casey Smith, the administrator. He isn't yet a statement of fact. They don't have to submit nothing. The geotechnics don't have to submit nothing to this department. They're, they're a certified engineer with a seal. They can't, this department can't, can't boss a geotechnical engineer, pure and plain.
I would never come to, I would never come to make a county and do any kind of design work without submitting it to the planning board.
I'm saying, as a statement of fact, though, it's like an engineer on an override Newt Morgan's decision. That stamp is more powerful. That's a more powerful piece of stamp that, that you can, but I'm just saying, so, in town, I think you're gonna have some engineers that go and look at that as, "Well, these fellows are just certified, they're not engineers, and now they're gonna be telling us what we can and can't do." I think that could be, you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but I, that's, that, that's taken care of in the professional code of ethics and, uh-
Well, that's, that's all well and good, but, uh, I mean, I think that if, if you hire, if the first goes out and pays money for a geotechnical engineer, uh, whatever they say is basically what, what county employees are gonna have to go by, is that right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I guess.
And it, I could comment here, it, it is certainly true that a professional, a registered professional in this state is presumed to have superior knowledge to an unregistered person. But that, that's-
Oh.
It presumed to have, yeah. And of course, maybe a bunch of them out there who don't, but whatever.
They don't know reading.
Let me ask you this question here. I read number seven, not to say that you have any sort of veto authority over what the professionals there tells you. All I read is to say, "You gotta show me you had a professional to hear in order to meet the construction requirement." Bring in some- They're just gonna show me that you've talked to somebody. That's what it says, acceptable justification is submitted. Justification that they have in fact talked to an engineer.
But somebody's got to determine what's acceptable.
And I wrote that down. What is acceptable technical justification? Now you're on the paper.
And if you don't intend for the administrator to make that call, then you need to say that.
I, I absolutely think, and in discussions and following along, what I think number seven is intending to say is, "You gotta show me you've talked to this guy." You, I don't care what, if he's got the seal, I'm not arguing with what he said. I just want you to show me that you've got a professional engineer with a legal protection.
That needs to be worded to say that, don't you think?
I have no problem with that, I'm just telling you, that's the way I think it is.
Just need to be tweaked, I think, I think everybody's on that same.
Cause I wrote that, I said, "What is acceptable?"
Cause working with them, they're gonna find that real quick, and they'll pay you.
Sure, and, and I think it'd be very presumptive if you require them to go get that, and then you pass judgment.
It's, it's poison the bad blood, though, bud.
No, I'm saying to them, you're not saying the same thing. If you say it's hurt, it's hurt, and boy, it's jumping this one's near, I don't like the sleuths. And that's not, and that's not what I think this is intending, is what I'm saying.
I like when they get cleaned up.
I don't disagree.
Except, it just needs said that you get it, that's exactly right.
That's right, there you go. And I think that was the intent. All, all the discussions I sent through, I thought that was the intent.
And the justification is submitted, that just needs to be, and just needs to say.
Bingo. You're on your business over, you're in your business.
Yeah, exactly.
We wanted to be a work, a good workplace, you're not already putting somebody else in.
As soon as that shows up, that old liability question, I'm sorry.
And this gentleman's point that we define what the, the design profession is going to be, I, I really think some coffee can give to that and to determine who has the appropriate credentials to do that. I would not leave it as design professional. I think we know what we're intending to get to, but I, I think we need to pin it down.
And can we all agree that number four is just redundant, and we can just eliminate that, Bobby?
Say what?
Number four.
What is that?
Number four says, "The land and certain activities should not contain any grade or structurally stabilized slope in excess of thirty feet in vertical height and cut areas of thirty feet, the vertical height and fill areas." We've said that before in the, in the previous thing, right?
Same number four, so we can get hired.
This is a, like a stabilized geo, geotextile stabilized slope. We call them MSC, MSC slopes.
You're talking to a grain wall.
Yeah, it could be a retaining wall, it could be anything, other than a graded slope. We have a definition for that.
I would not leave it as a design professional. I think we know what we're intending to get to, but I, I think we need to pin it down.
About design professional, any related field.
And can we all agree that number four is just redundant, and we can just eliminate that, Bobby?
Say what?
Number four.
What is that?
Number four says, "The land and certain activities should not contain any grade or structurally stabilized slope in excess of thirty feet in vertical height and cut areas of thirty feet, vertical height and fill areas." We've said that before in the, in the previous- We've said that before in the, in the previous thing, right?
Saying number four, saying it can't be hired.
This is a, like a stabilized geo, geotextile stabilized slope. Slope.
Not, not a cut slope, structurally stabilized. I think they're talking about, we're talking walls here.
M S E slope.
You're talking retaining wall.
Yeah, it could be a retaining wall. It could be...
That's a way of doing it. There are other ones.
Other than a graded slope.
What's the definition of structural stabilized?
I can read that for a man. I have a definition for that.
There's a definition.
Alright.
Structural stabilized slope.
No, I, I don't think I'd eliminate that. We could tweak it, but I don't think we need to. I think it's good.
Well, two and three applies the same thing, except for the word, one, one word.
I do, I know what happened there when we were in the planning board meeting. Um, a lot of people weren't understanding whether we were talking about a total height of thirty feet, including both the fill and the cut slope. So some folks wanted to put that in there. Number four is just a clarification stating that it was a thirty-foot fill or a thirty-foot cut. That's how it got in there. I don't see it. As long as two and three are understandable, then I think it could come out.
But if it helps, if you want to, you know, for me, if you're saying you've done the same things you're completing. Louis, Al won't own this one on that thirty feet, yeah.
Explain that just a little bit more to us.
I guess what we're asking is, is there a difference between the slopes we're talking about in two and three and the kind of slope we're talking about in four? Because to my way of thinking, there is, but maybe I'm not seeing it right. I don't see the word structurally stabilized in two and three. To me, that says something different.
That needs to be changed, because I think the intent was, if it's a structurally stabilized slope, it's got to be designed by an civil engineer, a technical engineer.
Okay, well, in that case, we did it.
That's the intent.
In that case, we did it.
And it probably doesn't say that very well.
That's, that's what I was asking. Because to me, those were two different slopes. One was a graded slope, the other was a structurally stabilized slope, and I saw those as two different things. And, and so what you're saying is, the intent is that all structurally stabilized slopes should be engineered, basically. And the other one, not so much. If it's between five and thirty feet, makes a difference. Okay, I just wanna make sure I understood what you're saying. That's where I got my...
But another word, that's not saying that thirty feet deep is the deepest you can feel.
I'm sorry.
What that's saying is, you, you can feel more than thirty feet, or is that natural?
You can feel more than thirty feet, but if you do, you've got to have an engineer to design. Right.
We're number two and three. We're done with two and three. That's why I said... And I would say, and I'd say, Ronnie, I would come in there and, and add a sentence. If anything over thirty feet must meet requirements of paragraph seven. I mean, you gotta go to paragraph seven if you're over thirty feet, if that's what the intent is. I'm not saying that's what will get approved. I'm saying if that's the intent, then that needs to be in there. Because all right now, you've only got this five to thirty, you don't say anything about what happens after thirty, even though it's assumed, but it doesn't say that. So what I'd like to do is, look at adding a sentence. It says, look, if you're going over thirty feet, paragraph seven, clock. You're, you're outside the, you're outside the back. I think that's why you did it that way. Now I'm talking myself into it. I see what you're saying. If it's over thirty feet, it doesn't mean that, so paragraph seven, you're only... I understand. God, it's sorry. I had to talk myself around it.
Thirty feet's a lot.
It's a lot.
Three feet for a fill, I mean.
It's three times the height that the...
Three stories to it.
Two and a half times for that, this one.
That vertical.
Here's the problems that we've had, now sure if y'all have done this discussion, this, this is the reason why we're in this town. We've done a lot of little mental errors. And they build a road, they take the trees, everything off this side, that's just what stabilizes that slope below. For what? It rots out, it looks really good. You put three foot dirt on there, let Louis Pinnell lay the rock, grass, could, it looks great. But that looks good. And then what happens over a period of time, ten, twelve, fourteen years, and that stuff deteriorates and rots. It starts to slow, even some before that. They can take you, Jack working to take your dirt, can take you to road after road after road. We dug twelve loads of logs out of one house place. Twelve loads of logs out of one house place. The boy to walk on it, you think many will lie. That's correct. You used up, you used up a rod down here. A little wood here. So that's, you know, that's where we've got, it protects the home by number one. And, and protects who's doing, you know, because a lot of folks come in, and we hope, we hope they come back. But all, we don't wanna put nothing, and that's gonna deter that. But when they do start coming back, we also wanna make it, whereas, now that gentleman we was working for, he paid a lot of money to get a lot of dead wood, rotten wood, all the way off that mountain. A lot of money. So, you know, that's the reason that, that's where a lot of this came from, because of what's happened in the past. But you can't, you can't go back and fix all that. Somebody's gonna have to, or do that. Yeah, well, one of these road disbillings won't fail. It might be today, it might be, and a lot of them already are, so...
The trouble is, is, uh, in this, in this line of business, in the geotechnical business, you don't see it happen tomorrow. You can make mistakes, and you don't see it tomorrow. Like putting up a crooked piece of drywall or something. But then you've got the wave of clouds for Mother Nature to work on. But believe me, Mother Nature will work on. We are gonna have another series of storms like we did in two thousand and four. You can bet on it. I don't know when exactly, but I'd say we're getting pretty close.
Do you know when, you'd be the man?
Well, I, if I had to be, if I had to bet, wrote the road and bet on it, I'd say probably in the next two years. That'd be about a ten-year period since we've had that storm.
And just to clarify there, my Bobby, I was just going, the one to one is, is a ninety-degree angle, and then draw the line between those two angles.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Right.
So that creates this angle of a cut.
Right.
So the one to two is, is a deeper cut.
Right.
Flatter, flatter cut. That means you have a much higher bank on, on an hour road, on two to one, you have it. It's, it's not hardly half, it's a little, you don't work in fifty percent.
It's like that slash you see on Indian Mountain from here, which a lot of that took a break, because it's rock, or what, it's a turtle. Was it slid? But it looks, it looks like...
Gentlemen, I, I just, I know I've probably talked more than anybody here, but I, I, I just don't want to see y'all do the wrong thing. And, and, um, I've been in this business for forty-four years. I've seen a lot of groups like yours make serious mistakes that didn't come to bear until they were long gone. And some people say, pushing that baby. But the people that made those decisions did not do what you're doing. And that is, tried to get to the bottom of the, the real issues, technical issues. Uh, I know Ed and I do a lot of expert testimony, and, and we always get the same question, right, sir? Are you getting paid for your opinions? No, sir. I have never been paid for any opinion that I make. I get paid for my time as an expert, but I never get paid for my opinions. My opinion is free to view tonight, and I drove, drove up here from Raleigh, I mean, from Asheville, I was driven from Raleigh, this man right here, who, did I tell him? Al, did I tell him?
No.
No. We've known each other a long time. Uh, and, uh, but I came over here because I, there are places in these mountains that are just places where God used to tie things together, and, and we shouldn't be messing with it. The slopes are too steep, the soils are not right, the rocks not right. So when you get above a certain slope, let's leave it to heaven alone. I know I'm getting back on the slope thing, but it all ties together. Don't let somebody dig into a three to one slope, then you might as well not have it. This don't need to be...
I said that one more time. What's my digging end?
So a three to one slope, thirty percent slope, a thirty-three and a third percent slope. Anything over, anything over fifteen, twenty percent, twenty percent, twenty-five. You're using up more land to try to get to where you wanna go than you are using the profit. Think about it. Can't build a road except for eighteen percent slope. So by the time you snake that baby all upside, you rut that, the side of the mountain, trying to stay under eighteen percent. You've used all the land to build a crooked road. So that's why I say, go back and think about your slope ordinance, and you'll have stronger construction standards. If you don't mind, I'll excuse myself. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you, and if I can do anything to help you, if I can provide you textbooks, reference materials.
But you offered your opinion to make the game for free for the rest of the...
Sir?
For any problem we have, you've offered your opinion for free.
We'll talk.
No.
See you, Dan.
We'll talk, man.
Thank you a lot.
I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing something about this grant.
Okay.
And we, we need some more help, so...
Okay, thanks.
We did that for a week, so thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you for coming.
Like I mentioned, I think it's very educational, but I, I've still got one other question, but I'm gonna drop it here.
What a road trip would be worth, would be, would be worth his goal.
I mean, I mean, if we could get together, I don't know how we could do that. If we could go and let these, and show us one, and what the problems are, and, and why it's like that. I think that, and that shows what, I mean, most people don't have a clue what a one to one, a thirty-foot, thirty, a thirty-foot fill, I mean, they want that.
I, I can show you.
Okay, all right, gentlemen, we'll, we'll continue moving on. The next thing we have, yeah, Mr. Terry Bell's here. Mike, okay, full water, sewage, and the quest, Carol, and Johnson.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you, man.
Louis, thank you very much.
Director, thanks on the mission. Yes, thank y'all.
You know, leave for me, that's, that's your current job.
Yeah, we've been, uh, before you, and I'm gonna start with numbers, number two first. If you remember, at, at Iowa, we first got a, got permitted to do a above ground rip, uh, system for our, for sewage. And we found out that that's a very costly thing, uh, as far as maintenance goes, over the years. It's gonna be a recurring cost, uh, to the, uh, school of this county. So, uh, I had to negotiate with the, uh, Cherokee tribe to enter into their sacred, uh, ground down there. They agreed to do a subsurface system. And so we had to go back to the repermitting process, Jeff was involved in that, and, uh, so now we have to change order to make that change occur. If you go to the back page, that's the most important page. So you can see the total, uh, cost of change order is thirty-seven thousand and eighty-five dollars. This has been reviewed by Mr. Horton, it was reviewed by, uh, Mr. Bradshaw, it was the supervisor concept. It's subject to his recommendation, do Jack, do the back, regulations to you. And we go ahead and proceed, this is in the budget that he, uh, originally had told us to accomplish.
And Terry, if you had, you know, Jim, you see the thirty-seven thousand dollars, and you go back to our original discussion with that original system that we placed there. Just the maintenance fees on that thing, to, to have the testing done, have somebody, we were gonna pay somebody that are almost dated to supervise and babysit this, this original system, right, sir?
We, we figured that it's gonna cost somewhere between about three thousand dollars a year in, in, in modern days. And this...
So, yeah. We had a lot of questions from the get-go, but we were in the process then, with Kevin and your honey weren't here during that discussion. We had a lot of questions in, but we were so far in the process, we were trying to get loans to go to the...
Right, right, right. Wrong point, that wrong go, just working on the others, uh, go ahead, get somebody trained. And then you had to have an employee who's possibly...
Do some babysitting, that.
But this system that you're, that you're looking at now, uh, there's still some maintenance, Bobby, if, if that's gonna work, this part. We'll have a person that we have to look at maybe once a week, and maybe this maintenance deal, like once a month. Ask Washington, Washington out the field, or something that, that they can do, was, uh, a great, uh, hope it's hard to...
And I, I will interject, and, uh, Jack and I felt extremely fortunate when we went over to, we met with Patrick and, and the, uh, ECBI representatives and all over, and we felt extremely, um, fortunate, I'll say, that, uh, they agreed to this without, uh, the normal hoops we had to jump through. So, uh, we were very pleasantly surprised that we were able to have them agree to do this. It already felt a little bit of work for us, because we're only going, I think, six or eight inches down. And that, that particular area where we needed to put it, it had already been, uh, stripped and, and, uh, certified, if you will, uh, presented, actual, explanation, and everything else, so we were very fortunate to be right with this.
And then I'll say this, uh, for a supervisor concept, this change would be, coming, it's catching up to about a month. We've been negotiating, and you would not have proved it, uh, the first two or three times that you sent to us. And it really got sent back and, and...
I would say there's been a lot of hard work by National, and the road package, Bradshaw, and Jack Horton to, uh, get the contract for the sharp intensives. Points and counterpoints made, and this went from a net increase of, you know, it, it came down, the net increase of, what, about a hundred and forty-seven thousand? I suppose it's seventy-six, I was, I stand corrected.
Hundred and sixty-one thousand, so I thought I was changing.
So a lot, you know, it's been a lot of hard work for them on behalf of the county, and I wish to Jack and Pat.
The other piece of this change order is, we've got to move, it makes a change out there also to the, some mail holes, I always have to have the license, so I keep, I'm just seeing the big green right there.
Secretary of Civil Protection.
I can speak to that problem. I can speak to what he referred to. Basically, what it is, there's a sewer collection line that runs right down by the school, and what they need to do is move that a little bit further out, it gives us, it's going to give us a going to expand out there if we need to, without having to come in at a later date after everything's been done, take it back up, move it over at a much higher expense. So if we do it right the first time, we won't have to do it the second time. And that's in order to about thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars in the increase of the contract amount to do that additional work.
And simple design concept, if you just, just request to, and actually, third figure for tires, and make sure that that business is a good thing to get done with this project.
Now, gentlemen, the actual change order has not yet been circulated, we're not able to approve that this evening, but if the commissioners are so inclined to accept these recommendations, Mr. Bradshaw informed us this letter October twenty-second, two thousand and eleven, and then authorized by, I spoke this evening, to have Jack Horton sign the change order when it becomes available, provided it is consistent with what Mr. Bradshaw has set forth in his October twenty-second, two thousand and eleven memo, then we can certainly do that and go ahead and keep this thing moving. Now, one thing you do need to know, it's not in Mr. Bradshaw's memo, but came to me in an email today, the actual official change order will also revise the amount of construction days from the original contract, so if the project achieves substantial completion March one, two thousand and twelve, the final completion date of April one.
That's good, that's exactly what I, that's a good point.
So that, that would be part of what you would be approving.
The April one date is crucial because H M then has got to have a viable water sewer system, or to clean the building, get the building all checked out, or whatever you want.
So we're looking at about fifty-one thousand dollars total.
Fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five.
I'll take two more questions.
You know, having a candidate contingency.
That's what I was getting ready to ask.
You can have that, okay, I was gonna say, it's that.
We decided to land where we are.
Yeah, well, let me go ahead, I'll tell you what this is, basically, if this would be, we would approve this contingent upon the change order being taken care of, there's a budget amendment required, that's what I have here. And just to give you the information, the project contingency amount before this change order is three hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and seven hundred dollars, so after we take off fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, we'll still have three hundred and nine thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars left, and the contingency for that was.
What proceeds are we completing at this point?
About, I'd say we're sixty, sixty-five percent.
So we're ahead of the game as far as.
But we leave the game.
You want to say something to end that project, though?
It happened.
Well, you got furniture to buy.
Just one thing I want to confirm, you know, the school board's on board of the public.
Yes, I called Dr. Breaux today and gave him the details of this, so that he knows, and then, once you all do your paperwork, I think, then his next group meeting is, is the thing that they need to, at least to look at.
I was gonna say, you might want to approve it subject to their.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I make a motion that we authorize county manager to arrange and finalize the change order, and I guess we can make the motion on the budget amendment later.
In accordance with?
In accordance with the letter from Mr. Bradshaw's letter, and pursuant, and pursuant to the fact that the final change order meets up with those requirements as put forth in there, including the finished item.
But I think if these folks, folks taste, I think if you hold this job, we're not going to.
Well, I'll make that motion, we do the budget, we do both at the same time if you want.
We'll do it, we'll do it after this. So we got a motion to approve these change orders.
Authorize Jack.
Authorize Jack.
And authorize the county manager to sign, we'll have a second.
Second.
We got a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all the players signify on this thing, aye? Aye? Both?
And my other question about getting too deep into that, Terry, we've had a lot of street buildings, you would make sure you save a considerable chunk of that.
Yeah, and I will, and I will say this. And I don't say this often, and I'd say Ronnie got to be as efficient as I am, but both of these change orders, number one, we've known for a long time, this is a money-saving thing with our systemic system, and number two, it's been thirteen seven right now, and save a whole lot more than that later, if we want to do an expansion, it just simply makes sense, basically.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so we're not asking for tech color screens or anything, you know, or, you know, five swings to two or something like that, so I think they have essential pieces. And I'm certainly sensitive, as we all are, that we do need to guard our contingency money, but to me, these are why we have contingency.
And I agree with that whole thing, I've seen, I've seen people get into situations where you've got a pretty good contingency, you spend it pretty literally upfront, you get down to the end and it's gone.
Go back to the sock.
Okay, well, gentlemen, I would, thank you, Terry.
Thanks for all your work.
Appreciate it. Now, gentlemen, I.
We have kind of more to say than that.
I would, I will entertain a motion for this budget amendment, where we move from our contingency fund for all the school projects, we move fifty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars additional into the infrastructure fund for this school, leaving us then with three hundred and nine thousand five hundred and ninety-four left in our contingency for this project.
So moves, gentlemen.
Got a motion, a second, any other discussion? All the players signify on this thing, aye? Aye? opposed? As the regisseur's man, it's like you guys. All right, let's see what else we've got, we're getting close to the end of the.
I watch like this, I'm not sure my head is up.
Could have thrown it out. Okay, consideration of lease agreements, Mr. Turner.
Yes, gentlemen, Jack has been working, Jack Horton, county manager, has been working with some individuals and businesses, trying to fill up an empty incubator facility, at least on a short-term basis, to generate some revenue, rather than it just simply being a grant on the county. He has worked with an individual by the name of Deborah Green, who does business as quote, unquote, the appointed home. This outfit basically is a relatively new business entity that is in need of some space and an incubator facility to basically run a business. What she would be doing there is a business of manufacturing and selling ready-made pillows, hot coal therapy bags, and in addition, maybe use to manufacture several curtains that cause cussets, and provide online designs, consultation, and other home decor products and services. This, this would be for a small portion in the incubator facility, if you can see the diagram, it's yellow, the blue that's on there is just a common area, halls, bathrooms, and.
How many square feet, you say?
This, this particular one, Kevin, is a little over a land of a hundred square feet. And basically, Jack has recommended a monthly grant of one ninety-two, I believe that's consistent with the market that we're in right now, the fresh market that we're in. And we have prepared a published resolution for board's consideration, clearing that particular piece within the incubator facility, the surface, and approving it one year lease, that doesn't tie this property up if we agree with the time.
Tester, do these folks have to have their own insurance for their equipment and stuff? Do we have a copy, do we require a copy or additional insured on that?
As far as, as their insurance is concerned, that is, is up to them, there is an identification provision to the county that basically provides that the tenant will identify the lessor as wholly harmless from any, in all claims, actions, damages, liability, expenses, connection with lost supply, personal injury, or damage to property occurring in or out, or rising out of police premises, or caged in wholly or in part, by any act or omission of the tenant, its agents, law offices, sessionaries, customers, and authorities, and in the event lesser should be made authority to any litigation convinced by or against the tenant. Then the tenant shall take the lessor harmless, and she'll pay all costs to expenses, purposes, and conditions.
But again, are we requiring them to have insurance?
No, there's not any specific thing as far as their, their insurance is concerned.
Their contents wouldn't be covered unless they had a certain renter's.
What I'm saying about a third is, something they're doing though, burns the whole building there.
Well, and that's, yeah, we have talked a little bit about that, and the county, I believe, has a policy.
That's just like, well, you're, what I said, your policy.
But it's a valid, it's a valid point, and we'd be well advised to just get Jack to verify that indeed we've got coverage.
Some type of occupancy, in terms of.
But Mr. Horton is right, I think typically, the tenant generally looking at the policy as designed to protect their content on.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that.
This is, that's one, I've got another one, yeah. Yeah, I can present this other one, this is to J D Ewing Enterprises Inc., dealing business as central communications center, this is for a very small little place over there in the incubator facility, again, let me hold this up, if you'll remember how the incubator facility looks, there's a little office space in front there, immediately as you go in, you're in a, in the waiting area, and then to the right, there's one little receptionist office and calls over in there, that little piece where the receptionist office and calls is, that's what's going to be leased here. And of course, again, they have the right to use the common area, it's green and blue, that's the waiting area, as the bathrooms, that's being used in common with the tenants of the county. Jack has worked with these individuals, this particular outfit would be leased in for one year as well, again, November one of this year, the lease payment recommended by Mr. Horton, one sixty-seven a month for that. This, this particular area, even though it's a smaller area, you might be asking, why is it more or is it another, another one they've got to pay, this one is the one the county's, that's the reason for the difference there. Otherwise, those resolutions are virtually the same. Any questions?
Looking at, we got people going in there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, it's better than sitting.
We hope these folks have best of luck, we hope that they've missed the scarring for real business for both of us.
I did tell you what this other business was about, and I should do that, this is a, this is a high-tech business, it is high-tech, I don't know. This tenant has a business that markets a communication system using the Droid cellphone standard for various departments within the county and the city, you know, where it's like an app, it's designed to use smartphones, and in particular, living in the county
We hope them have best of luck.
These would be those documents that I may hand to you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve both these lease agreements, that's good.
And, and the resolution.
And the resolution.
We have a motion, Kevin, a second. All right, do we have any other additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all the players signify on this thing, aye? Aye? Opposed? Let the regisseur.
With, with the indulgence of the commissioners, there's a defensive discussion about a relatively small need for engineering services by the county in connection with an airport, a school water line extension project, I don't know if one of you may have spoken with Jack Horton about that, basically, he had received a proposal from W K Dixon Company, Inc., an engineering firm, and under the general statutes, if you have a need for architectural engineering services, the general will put it out for the question proposal, there's a rule that says, basically, if it's a project that's relatively small, and your estimated fee would be thirty thousand dollars or less, you don't have to go through that process, you can just straight on and get that proposal, this is a project that's a fairly high-end project, much lower than the statutory minimum, I have a proposed resolution whereby you exempt yourself in line, it's with general statute to one forty-three dash sixty-four point thirty-two, streamline that process.
You have a motion to approve the res, motion to approve the resolution. Yeah, we got a motion, a second, all the players signify on this thing, aye? Aye? Opposed? I'd like to, regisseur, this passed or not?
Thank you.
Okay, other than that, we have. A motion, a movement and a motion, Mr. Chairman. For attorney-client privilege, if possible, with the property acquisition.
And as part of that, the property that will be discussed will be a particular school, proposed use of recreation, and currently, making changes to.
And just for the review, would you likely to take any action when we come out?
I'm liking it.
I'd like to, yeah.
I would stay if you did.
I just asked a question for you, I wasn't out there.
Okay, all the favor, go, please, say. All the favor say aye?
Aye. Just leave your cell phone, we'll talk.
Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. All the news is here.
Bobby, thank you for covering all these events, nobody could hear, I looked at your website, a few things I'd like to change on you, but I'll, I'll work with you.